Hello guys, this is your friend and we are back with a new fanfic. Which is what if Naruto and Tamari being forced into a marriage by the Sand and Leaf Village councils? Part 2, and if you enjoyed this fanfic then please press the like button and subscribe to my channel for more fanfic like this and comment for next part. And now let's start the fanfic. After about ten minutes, since it was a really big garden and she was walking slow on purpose, she neared where she was going to meet Naruto. She just steeped out into the opening when she saw Naruto, dressed in a black kimono with orange belt, and black and orange jacket standing there lighting a few candles. "Naruto, you look pretty handsome, though I'm surprised to see so much black and so little orange," Tamari said, walking forward. "And this dinner also looks incredible, you didn't have to go this far." Naruto turned around and his cheeks heated up as he stared at Tamari in her kimono. "Wow, you look really beautiful, Tamari," he said, looking over every inch of her. "Just..." "Wow." Tamari also felt her cheeks turn red from slight embarrassment at being looked at in such a way by a guy. With her reputation and the way her brother Gara used to be most guys were either too scared of her, her brother, or just not seemingly interested in her for some other reason. So this was both unusual and, very nice to her. She shook herself out of her frozen state and walked forward to him. Now it was his chance to be shocked and happy, because Tamari walked up to him and wrapped her arms around him. She rested her chin on his shoulder and simple stayed there. "Uh, Tamari-chan, this is really nice, but why?" Naruto asked, blushing. "I don't know, it just felt right to do," she said, smiling and blushing. "Not many people have ever called me beautiful before. Just my mother when she was still alive, no one else, so to hear that you think I'm beautiful is, feels nice." "Well, it's true so," Naruto said, trailing off, as they pulled away from each other. "So shall we start our date?" "Love to," she said, walking over to her chair. "Looks romantic, I like it." Naruto was about to sit down when some of Ino's advice ranged through his head. "Whenever your date is going to sit in her chair, you always pull it out for her and push her in. Before she asks to you too, remember that Naruto..." "Uh, here let me, Tamari-chan," he said, pulling out the chair for her. "Thank you, Mr. Gentleman," Tamari said, sitting down and letting him push her in. "You obviously didn't learn your manners from Jiraiya though, huh?" "No way, I don't think he knew the meaning of manners," he said, snickering as he sat down, fidgeting in his kimono. "Stupid kimonos, why are they so uncomfortable?" Tamari just laughed at him for a moment. "I somehow figured you weren't a dress-up type," she said, grinning. "Though the fact that you did it for me is really sweet." "Uh, yeah, you're welcome," he said, rubbing the back of his head. "I did do it just for you after all." "So what are we having, oh Romeo?" She asked in teasing manner. He lifted up the tops covering the food to reveal their dinner. "I made baked salmon, with roasted mushrooms, green peppers, and sprinkled with chopped onions, curry, and garlic." Naruto said, proudly. "We also have a salad, even though I'm not really into vegetables much, with light salad dressing, some red wine and a piece of chocolate cake for dessert." "You like, and here I thought you couldn't cook very well, your shadow clones are quite the useful thing huh?" She said, very impressed. "It looks great, and this quite dinner date was a great idea, Naruto-kun." They ate while chatting a bit in an effort to get to know each other a bit better and were about to have dessert, when a female voice said, "Fancy running into you here, Naruto." Tamari and Naruto looked over and saw Sakura, of all people, standing there smiling. "Sakura, what the heck are doing here, how did you even find your way here?" Naruto asked, wide-eyed. "That's easy, I follow one of your clones that was brining back fish, while concealing my chakra," she said, very calmly. "Tell me, do you like my dress?" Sakura was dressed in a low-cut, sleeveless black dress, that ended at her mid-thighs. She also had a pair of pink high heels on, that she obviously wasn't used to wearing. "You like, Naruto-kun?" She asked, walking forward, while swaying her hips, seductively. "Walking in heels isn't easy, so you better appreciate it. What the do you think you're doing here, ruining her date, you pink-haired?" Tamari yelled jumping up. "Get your tie little out of here before I kick your your little ass." "Now now, Naruto doesn't like girls with foul mouths like that, do you Naruto?" She asked, as she walked closer. "Forget this bitch and come have some fun with me, we can go on that date you're always asking me about." "No, I want to stay here with Tamari-chan," Naruto said, narrowing his eyes. "You're my friend and teammate, but I want you to leave Sakura-chan." "I know you don't really mean that, she's just making you hate me," she said, coming to a stop a few feet from him. "Come on, take me out, Naruto." "You know you want to." Tamari walking in between Naruto and Sakura. "Leave now bitch, before I make you leave," Tamari said, angrily. "So, are going or not?" "Hem, not," Sakura said, crossing her arms. "Not without my Naruto that is." Tamari wasn't a type of girl to back down and was a tomboy by nature in many ways, so instead of saying anything else, she hauled back and clocked Sakura right in the middle of her face Sakura stumbled back holding her face. Naruto wasn't sure how to react at this point, sure he wanted Sakura to leave, but at the same time she was his friend. "You stupid blonde bitch," Sakura yelled, pulling her hand away from her face to reveal a very bloody nose, that was really gushing. "I'm going to you up." She ran at Tamari swinging, but despite being a Chunin Kunoichi, she didn't have as much experience in hand-to-hand combat as Tamari. She dodged out of the way, only receiving a small brush of Sakura's charka-charged fist. Tamari did feel a tiny cut on her cheek, but knew it was nothing major at the moment. However she also knew about Sakura being able to increase the strength of a punch to the point that she could turn a rock into dust, and she had to be careful. "Sakura, there you are, stop it now," Ino said, running. "I knew you were up to something, following Naruto earlier." "Ino?" Naruto asked, in surprise. "What are you doing here?" "Yeah sorry about interrupting your date, Naruto, Tamari, but I was following Sakura here, to stop her from doing something stupid." Ino said, out of breath from running. "Are you going to stop this and come with me Sakura?" "Get out of here, Ino pig, I'm busy kicking this blonde bitch's ass." Sakura said, holding her bleeding nose again. "Looks like she's the one kicking your ass, but nevertheless you need to come back with me," Ino said, slowly wailing over to her. "You should know I let Lady Tsunade know about you, and she said she would send over some Anbu to drag you back to her office. I convinced her let me try and stop you first, if you're were up to something, but you only get one shot, Sakura." "Damn it, Ino you bitch, I'm not going anywhere right now." Sakura said, growling. "Get out of my way before I kick your two." "Fine, I tried, she's all yours, Anbu," Ino said stepping aside. Three Anbu appeared beside Sakura and grabbed her arms. "The Hokage wants to talk to you, Miss Haruno," the one in the hawk-shaped mask said. "Make this easy on yourself, girly," the one in the S-shaped mask said. "Fine, do it." The third Anbu knocked Sakura out and disappeared with Sakura, and the hawk mask-wearing Anbu, while leaving the snake mask-wearing Anbu there. "Sorry about the commotion, Geki, all good now," she asked, putting a hand on her hip. "Yeah it's fine now, Anko, thanks," Naruto said, stepping forward. "Good timing too, we aim to please, brat," she said, grinning under her mask. "Well sorry about your date, at least it was interesting, right?" "Yeah sure it was Anko." "Keep up the jokes and you're not invited to the wedding," Naruto said sarcastically. "Liked you catch me in a dress anyway," she said, taking off her mask. "I might crash the party still, but it won't be in a dress." "Isn't taking off your mask on duty against rules?" Naruto asked, raising an eyebrow. "Not that I'm a expert or anything." "Yeah, but tough shit, I'm a captain of an Anbu squad, so I only answer to the Hokage." "She don't like she can kiss my fishnet-clad ass," Anko said, grinning. "Anyways, I gotta go, give my report and whatnot." "See y'all later, brat." She ruffled up his hair as best she could for spiky hair, and put her mask back on, before disappearing in a swirl of leaves. "Yeah I'll be going too, bye you guys, have a good night, or at least try to," Ino said, before she ran off, into the night. "Sorry our date turned out so bad, Tamari-chan," Naruto said, looking over at her. "Maybe our next one will turn out better." "I don't know, a nice dinner, a mostly quiet evening, and I got to hit someone." Tamari said, holding her hand. "Quote... dot... dot, I thought it was an overall good night, more or less anyway." "Well I think this is enough excitement for one night," Naruto, Tamari said, looking over at him. "I am going to call it an evening." "You coming?" "Uh, yeah I guess," he said, walking over to her. "Shall we?" He held his arm out to her indicating he wanted to link arms. Instead she took a hold of his hand and pressed the side of her body up against his as they begin to walk. "This is a nice to way to end the night, huh?" "A nice little catfight," Tamari said, leaning her head on his shoulder. "Followed by a nice little stroll together, I'm not much for romance." "But I like this." "Yeah, me too T-mary-chan," he said, smiling at her. They walked together till they reached the back door, where they went inside and up the stairs. At the top of the stairs they separated and faced each other, holding hands. "I wasn't sure at first about you." "But I'd be lying if I said I didn't like you," Naruto said, holding her hands gently. "I'm, looking forward to the day we get married." "I like you too, Naruto," she said, leaning into him. "And I'm looking forward to our marriage too." Their lips met in the middle briefly, before pulling away. They leaned in and kissed again right away, before putting their arms around each other. They kissed for a few minutes before Tamari pulled away. "Sorry, I think we should stop before it gets too far. I wanna wait till our wedding night to do anything more," she said, smiling at him. "And with that wine setting in I don't think I'd be able to stop if we started again." "Good night, Naruto." She walked away, and into her room leaving a smiling and blushing Naruto standing there on his own. He walked to his own room, took off his kimono and fell asleep almost as soon as his head hit his pillow. For the next several weeks Sakura keep trying to interrupt Naruto and Tamari whenever they were with each other. Tsunade had assigned Anbu to follow Sakura, and they ended up pulling Sakura and Tamari apart from fighting almost on a daily basis. This was greatly getting on Naruto and Tamari nerves as they came to really like each other and it only got worse after Tamari was mad into a leaf ninja and placed on Naruto's team. Even after the first incident, when Tsunade discovered Sakura was drunk, before crashing Tamari in Naruto's date, and she ended up throwing her into a cell overnight, Sakura seemed as determined as ever to break them up. After about almost two weeks had passed, Tsunade had received a letter from the Fire Lord about the Resurrection Act that the Haiga Clan, the Ibramai Clan and originally the Yamanaka Clan as well, had requested be enforced. "Hem, looks like these clans have legitimate claim for this." "This is just another headache I don't need, Shizun," Tsunade said, shaking her head. "Send out a copy of this to the Haiga and Ibramai clans ASAP." "Yes, Lady Tsunade," Shizun said, taking the paper. "So what are we going to do about this?" "Hem I've been thinking about this and we have about three weeks left before the Fire Lord visits about this manor." Tsunade said, looking up at Shizun. "If Tamari and Naruto were to marry before or around that time, then the disputing clan's request would be overthrown." "Why would it be overthrown by that?" Shizun asked, raising one eyebrow. "Why would them marrying before he visits make a difference in this situation?" "Because, this was an arranged marriage set up by two village councils," Tsunade said, smiling. "And according to a paper I found while searching through the vaults before, when we were trying to overthrow the original arranged marriage, says a request for the Clan Restoration Act would be then be considered null and void. Besides, I've had the strangest feeling for a short time now that someone or something is coming to our neck of the woods." "Very soon," Tsunade said, looking out the window. "It's only a felling but the last time I felt this I ignored it and it turned out to be pain of the Akatsuki." "Well, I hope you're wrong this time, considering all that's happened recently," Shizun said, walking up next to her. "Though I do wonder what the future will bring for us, I'd rather it not be yet another disaster." Tsunade looked over at her briefly before turning back to the window, "Yeah, so do I Shizun." "So do I, I will get stronger and kill him." Sasuke Uchiha said, as he and Madera walked through the forest. They had begun travel a few days ago and were looking for strong allies to assist them in exacting revenge against Naruto Uzumaki and perhaps the Leaf Village as well, just for fun. They were currently on their way to the Hidden Rain Village to look for recruits. They were wearing clocks to hide their identities and also used genjutsus to further obscure themselves. They paddled their small boat up to the dock area by the entrance to the village and got before tying the boat up to a post. Then they walked up to the gate that was guarded by two Rain Village guards, one very tall and slim, the other was average height and quite muscular. "Halt, what reasons do you have for entering the Rain Village?" The tall guard, standing at the front gates asked. "State your business, I don't have to explain anything to a loser like Al." Sasuke yelled, as Madera smacked him in the head. "Forgive my idiot son, he doesn't have many manners, I'm afraid," Madera said, stepping forward. "We are simply travelers, looking for food, supplies, and a little rest." The guard looked them over for a moment with a raised eyebrow, before moving aside. "Fine, you may enter. After we issue you two, some temporary passes for..." "How long will you be here for?" "Oh, probably not more than a few days at the most, say, three days, maybe less." Madera said, pretending to be polite. "We'll definitely be gone before the end of three days." The guard wrote them up a couple of three days town passes and handed them to Madera and Sasuke. They were about to walk through into the village when the other guard blocked them. "There were a lot of problems in our not-so-distant past with the Akatsuki." "Add that to the fact that I don't trust you two." The muscular guard said, in a deep voice. "I'll be keeping an eye on both of you till you leave, so don't make any trouble or I'll have you skidding out the gates so hard, you'll have scars on your asses for the rest of your lives, got it?" Sasuke sneered under his hood, while Madera nodded and said yes to them, before the guard moved to the side and let them pass. They walked on through and made their way through the city. "Sasuke, for the time being I'll refer to you as Genji, which means two beginnings, and appropriate me for you, considering," Madera said in a whisper as they walked. "In addition, you'll call me father or dad." "Understand, fine." "Dad," Sasuke growled out, clearly unhappy about this development. "Now what, I wasn't lying, by the way, when I said we need supplies, it is, after all, a long ways to the Leaf Village," Madera said, coming to a stop. "You will take this list and this money, and gather our supplies." "What, why the hell should I do such commoners work?" Sasuke, asked, in a nasty tone. "And what would you be doing in the meantime, that's so important." "Me, I will be looking for one of the Seven Demon Swordsman who is rumored to live here," Madera replied calmly. "Now go, we need to hurry up and get going." "Or do you wish to procrastinate and not get what is ours?" "Just one problem, the Seven Swordsmen are dead," Sasuke said, in a know-it-all tone. "Unless we plan on using a corpse to help us." "Ignorant boy." "Don't assume you know everything," Madera said, in a harsh tone. "There is a newer member of current generation of the Seven Swords living here, and I will find him. Now go get our supplies, and stop complaining like a whiny little brat." Sasuke growled at him again, but stomped off to find some cheap merchants in town, without saying anything. Madera watched him leave before walking off to search for the clues about the location of the swordsman. "I hope this doesn't take too long, I have just as little patience as the Boyd is when it comes to repaying the Leaf Village and Naruto Uzumaki in particular." Leaf Village, back in the Leaf Village, Naruto and Temori's relationship was progressing nicely, despite Sakura's attempts to ruin it. She would continuously try to ruin interrupt their dates and bud into when they were resting together after taking breaks during training. Kakashi had had enough and went to the Hokage to do something about it. He walked on the roof over to the open window of the Hokage's office. "Yo," he called in alerting the Hokage of his presence. "Got a minute, Lady Tsunade." "Kakashi, E-H-H-H, why can't you and Naruto just use the door like everyone else?" She complained, putting down her sake glass. "So what do you want?" "Well once again I'm her to talk about the issue with Sakura," Kakashi said, hopping through the window. "She's just getting worse and worse, I don't even think it was this bad when Sasuke was on the team and she was in love with him." "I should have figured as much," she replied, looking up at him. "So what did you want to do about it?" "Well, considering Naruto and Tamari are Janan and Sakura, and Sire Chunin, maybe having Squad Seven officially break up unless there's a urgent mission, would be the best solution for things," Kakashi said, pulling out his Makeout Paradise book. "What do you say?" "Hem you have a point I suppose." "Fine, so be it, make sure you let them know, ASAP," she said, folding her hands. "Anything else, if not, you're dismissed." He nodded to her before disappearing from her office in a whirl of leaves. "I better get prepared, for when Naruto comes complaining about this," she said to herself, taking out some more sake. "Which should be anytime now." Right she was about Naruto showing up at her office, which happened about a half hour later. "Yo, Grandma Tsunade," Naruto said, jumping through the open window. "So you're breaking up Squad Seven?" "Yes, but one, it was Kakashi's idea and two, it will keep Sakura away from you and Tamari," Tsunade said, sipping some sake as she walked close to her desk. "Any questions?" "Um, yeah, just one, can I have my own team?" He asked sitting down in her chair, and putting his feet up on her desk. "I am a Janan after all and I have a lot of experience from Kakashi, Purvi Sage, and Toad Geezer." "Well maybe not Kakashi, but the other two definitely taught me a lot." Tsunade spit out the sake in her mouth and started laughing at him. She was even holding her stomach until she looked up and saw him with a confused expression on his face. "You're serious, aren't you?" She asked, as she stopped laughing, and sat down on the chair in front of her desk. "Why the sudden interest?" "Hem, no real reason but my dad taught a team, my mom probably taught a team, and most of the other Hokages hate teams." Naruto said, looking at her seriously, "Besides, I want to pass on the will of fire that the old man third Hokage and Purvi Sage entrusted to me." "I see, hem, very well, I'll allow you to take on a team with one condition." She said, crossing one leg over the other. "This will be on a trial basis, and only if I decide the team is doing well, will you be allowed to stay one, do you agree?" "You got it, Grandma Tsunade," Naruto said, grinning as he stood up, "I'll whip the team into shape, believe it." "By the way, don't you want the list of soon-to-be graduating ninjas to choose from, before you leave?" She asked walking over to a filing cabinet. "There are a couple of spot left for a squad captain for you to choose from." "Oh, I'm not choosing a new team, I'm taking Closet Pervert's team," he said, flooding his arms. "You know, Konohamaru, Moegi, and Udon, and what makes you think you can just take another team that already has a sensei?" She asked, raising an eyebrow. "Because of seeing the way he so-called, trains, them," he said making quotation gestures in the air. "They need to train right, and I'm the one who can do it." "May I remind you that they need a captain who can motivate them, not one who is friends with them." Tsunade said, sitting down at her desk, "Besides, Udon doesn't seem cut out for ninja work, he's shown a lot of promise in research and might be better suited for the Cryptanalysis Unit. Then get him put in there as a apprentice and I'll take the other two," he said, simply. "Besides, after I'm done I guarantee they'll hate my guts, just like I hated Purvi Sage's guts when he was training me." "I see, well, putting Udon into the Cryptanalysis Unit is one thing, but have you forgotten that you need three members for a squad?" Tsunade said, handing him the papers with the soon-to-be ninjas lists on them. "Pick a third and then you can do your plan." He looked the first paper over for a minute before looking at the second piece PF paper. "Hem, this second paper isn't a newly graduation list. This is from a past one, but hey, Hanabi Haiga isn't on a squad, and yet it says she graduated, I'm confused." "Hem, Hanabi, oh, there wasn't enough other graduates for her to be on a squad and I guess her father, Lord Hiashii, decided it didn't matter," Tsunade said, taking the paper, he handed to her. "You want to use her on your squad?" "Hem, why not," she related to Hanata and Neji right. Naruto said, nodding to her. "Where are the three of them right now?" "According to the schedule, Konohamaru and Moegi have the day off, and I assume Hanabi is at the Haiga Clan house right now," she said, looking at the mission and schedule reports on her desk. "If you're serious about using them, I can have a messenger go fetch them and order them here." "I am, so can you fetch them?" He asked impatiently. "I wanna get training them on chakra control and see which elements they are." "Good plan, for a knucklehead." She said, grinning. "Okay, I'll fetch them, so try to be patient, even if it's not one of your strong suits." She had two Anbu track down the three and after about fifteen minutes, Konohamaru and Moegi arrived with Hanabi showing up minutes later. "Nay-san," two of them cried out, jumping on him and hugging him. Guess which two, while Hanabi stood there expressionlessly, waiting for the Hokage to inform her of what she needed. Tsunade waited for other S to stop fooling around before she started talking to them. "Good of you three to make it here in a short amount of time." "I'm sure you're eager to know why you're here though, so I won't beat around the bush," she said, leaning forward. "From this day forward, you three will be designated Squad Eleven, under recently appointed Janan, Naruto Uzumaki." Konohamaru and Moegi cheered while Hanabi widened her eyes in response. "It is very doubtful, Father will approve of this," Hanabi said, looking at the Hokage. "He only allowed Hanata to do so because he didn't even think she would graduate from the academy." "I don't really see him agreeing to this, I don't remember asking him." "He may rule the Haiga Clan, but I make the decisions when it comes to the village," Tsunade said, looking the pale-skinned girl. "This decision is final, unless you want to interrupt him at important meets for something so trivial, so he can come argue with me about it." Hanabi visibly flinched at the thought, and said, "I see, I will still need to inform him of this however." "Fine, do so after training today," Naruto said, walking in front of them. "We'll use Squad Seven's training grounds, since my team has been broke up due to to many high-ranking members. If you don't know where the grounds are, then memorize it when we go there in a minute." "Now move along, we need to get started." "This is going to be so awesome," Konohamaru said, excitedly. "Big Brother Naruto is totally going to teach us some awesome jutsu." "Be quiet, you moron, your voice is quite irritating," Hanabi said, nastily. "If I have to endure being a team with you, I don't wanna have to hear you so much." "Oh bite, me you stuck-up little brat," he yelled back. "Pull that stick out of your and grow a sense of fun." "How dare you speak to someone of my stature like this," Hanabi said, yelling at him. "You are nothing more than a little owl." Naruto had calmly walked behind them and smacked them both in the back of the head, hard enough to make them stumble. "Both of you need to shut up," he said, looking down at them. "I won't stand for bickering like this on my team. You don't have to become best friends, but you will respect one another and get along, do I make myself clear, maggots?" "You have no more right to touch me than he does to talk to me in such a way, besides..." "Maggots, if anyone here is a maggot it is you," Hanabi said, before getting smacked in the head again. "Shut your mouth little brat, I'm your teacher, a Janan, and I'm far older than you, so shut it down and don't talk back or I, will make your life a living hell, little girl," Naruto said, leaning close and letting a little killer instinct flow off. "Do I make myself clear?" She shuddered slightly but maintained a still pose before answering with yes in a small quiet voice. "Good, now move out, our destination is Squad Eleven Training Grounds, formerly Squad Sevens," Naruto said, opening the door and pushing them through.
opening the door and pushing them through. Now walk, and keep your mouths shut unless it's important. After he closed the door Sunade was quite stunned at what had taken place just a moment ago. Was that really the same wine knucklehead that used to whine about getting better missions? She said, out loud, to herself. I think I need to see his unique training methods in action. She leapt out the window and made her way to the training grounds to watch her grandson and his squad in action. She soon arrived and was pleased to see we're just walking into the area. Okay you three, have a seat, he said standing in front of them. Now, first off, tell me you names, likes, dislikes, and goals. You go first pigtails, he pointed to Moegi who nodded and started.
My name is Moegi, I like my friends Udon, and Konohamaru, my big brother Naruto, training, missions and picking flowers. I'm not too fond of some of the D-ranked missions, and Konohamaru's perverted jutsu. She said, before taking a breath. As for my goal, I want to be Naruto and then Konohamaru's assistant when they become Hokage and for now I want to be a respectable Kunoichi.
Alright, very good, Naruto said, giving a small smile. You next, scarfs, Konohamaru pointed to himself to make sure he next and after Naruto nodded he said.
My name is Konohamaru Serutobi, I like my big brother Naruto, my friends Udon and Moegi, training, playing pranks and ramen. I don't like stupid D-ranked missions, and certain pale-eyed stuck-up brats. My goal is to become the seventh Hokage.
Idiot, you mean sixth Hokage, Hanabi said, snickering in a mean tone. Can't you even count right? Naruto is going to be the sixth Hokage, yuli-brat. He yelled back, or is the stick-up your poking your brain? Both of you, twenty laps around the training field after we're done here. Naruto yelled down at them, any more arguing will mean additional laps added to the fifty you three are already going to do, Firecracker, you're up, go. He was pointing at Hanabi when he spoke who angrily mumbled about stupid nicknames and unfair senseis, before taking her turn.
My name is Hanabi Hayuga, not Firecracker, I like bananas, milk, training with father and I hate the bickering within my clan and ignorant morons who wear scarves, she said, with narrowed eyes. As for my goals, I don't really have one, since I'm already expected to be either the next clan leader or else second in command to my sister, Hanata, if she continues to shape up to the elders level of acceptability and becomes clan head. Once again Konohamaru and her began arguing and Naruto simply added more laps for them, until Hanabi was about to use taijutsu on him and Naruto had had enough.
That does it, Hanabi, I'm getting sick and tired of you starting shit, he said, grabbing a hold of her from behind. Konohamaru, get running your laps now one hundred laps, Moegi get to your fifty laps, move. He sat down on the ground roughly, bringing Hanabi down with him, between his legs. He wrapped his arms around her tightly and held her wrists so she couldn't move much. She struggled against him of course and tried to break out of his grasp. Ouch, my butt, hit the ground hard you idiot, what are you doing to me, let go this instant.
She yelled wiggling against him. You have no right to do this, you moron.
I'll let you go when you calm down, Firecracker, he said, holding tightly. I can't have you picking fights with Konohamaru and causing problems. You're not physically strong enough to get out of my hold either, so calm down if you want me let go.
I'm not calming down at all you, she yelled, squirming as hard as she could muster. I'm going to kick your stupid when I get free.
Sure, go for it, Firecracker, he replied, calmly. You'll only wear yourself out faster. Sure enough, just as he said, a short time later she was struggling less and less as she became tired out. She gave a few more barely their movements to break free, but then just gave up and collapsed against him. He let go of her wrists and stood up making sure to catch her so she wouldn't hit the ground. He carefully picked up the tired-out girl and leaned her against a nearby tree, putting his folded-up jacket behind her head. He then reached into his hip pouch and pulled out a small canteen of water and a bag of trail mix. He handed them both to the weakened girl before talking again. I want you to drink the water, eat the trail mix, and rest till your strength is back. Naruto said, crouching down face level to her. After you're rested you'll be in your laps. If you don't finish them today, then you'll continue them tomorrow. Do you understand? She was too tired to argue, so she nodded, took the food and water he handed her, and started eating right away. Don't drink too fast though, it's not good for you, he said, looking down at the girl. I'm going to go join those two in doing laps, when you feel rested enough, join us. And don't pretend to be exhausted the entire time, cuz I will be checking on you. She nodded briefly and continued to eat and drink to regain her energy. After resting, she felt much better, so she decided to stand up and stretch before doing the laps she was told to do. She waited for her teammates and sensei to near her and before she joined them in sprinting alongside them. Glad to see, you're joining us, Hanabi. Naruto said, grinning despite the sweat running down his face. Do your best to keep up. Come on, Konohamaru, Moegi, get your butts in gear, you're almost done, then you can take a short break before I decide on rather you doing anything more today or not. The four of them did lap after lap, with Moegi finishing up first, and proceeded to collapse by a tree, where they ate and drank the snacks Naruto had brought along for them. Naruto, Hanabi, and Konohamaru on the other hand continued to run since they had more to do than the Moegi. Eventually Konohamaru finished as well and joined Moegi by the tree, laying on his back, panting, while Naruto and Hanabi continues running laps around the training field. Naruto looked over, time from time to make sure she was doing okay, since she was quite exhausted before. It wasn't long before he noticed her slowing down and getting tired again, the energy she had regained from the snack he had given her was wearing off, in addition to not being used to running so much. She stumbled and almost fell on her face, if not for Naruto grabbing Erbi her waist at the last minute, preventing her from eating ground. Hanabi, I think we should call it a day, and I'll even forget about the other laps since you did so well without complaining. Naruto said, standing her up. Hanabi, you're asleep, ha, sleeping on your feet, I wish I had a camera. He easily picked up the light girl and hoisted her over his shoulder, before walking over to Moegi and Konohamaru. Okay you two, I was going to have us do some chakra control exercises, but since Firecracker here, latterly fell asleep on her feet, and it is getting late, I think we'll call it a day, Naruto said, getting a better grip on the sleeping Hanabi. Come on, let's get you two home okay. Naruto, Konohamaru and Moegi then walked off together so he could drop them off and carry Hanabi to her clan's house. Sunade watched them walk off and couldn't help but smile along with Shizun, who had joined her a short time ago. I think Naruto is going to make a great sensei, Shizun said, smiling at Sunade. A little unorthodox, especially his way of calming Hanabi Hayuga down, but very effective nonetheless. I agree completely, Shizun, Sunade said, as she started walking back towards the Hokage Tower. I think his temporary status is now a permanent one, I can't wait to see what that kid does next. Speaking of the kid, Naruto had dropped off Moegi, and Konohamaru at their homes and walked along the streets till he got to the Hayuga Clan estate. He walked up to the front gates and was met by a female Hayuga guard. Halt, who goes, Uzumaki sama, my apologies, to what do we own this nightly visit? She asked, bowing. And, is that Lady Hanabi? You don't have to call me sama. And yeah it is, I'm her sensei now and I brought her home, he said, slightly irritated with the whole sama suffix thing. She fell asleep during our squad's training, so I carried her home. Can I bring her in? Um, I need to fetch you a escort first to show you in and out, it's the rules, she said, looking at him. Neji Hayuga has mentioned you being his friend, I could get him to do this task, is that expectable, Lord Uzumaki? Just call me Naruto please, he said, shaking his head. And yeah, could you have Neji do the escort thing? Of course, Naruto. Just a moment please, she said, before speaking into her headset. Yes, Neji is requested at the front gates, it is for escort duties, yes, thank you. He will be out momentarily. Cool, thanks, um, what's your name? He asked, shifting Hanabi for a better grip on her. Man she's light, don't she eat anything? Um, my name is Asuka, Asuka Hayuga, it is nice to meet you, she said, somewhat nervously. By the way, Naruto, you should carry Lady Hanabi in a different position, than that. If any of the main branch were to see her being held eye such a manner, they may get mad. Hmm, okay, Naruto said, as he pulled her off of his shoulder, and held her in a bridal style. How's this, um I suppose that is more acceptable. Oh, Neji-san you're here, she said, looking over her shoulder. Naruto is he to bring back Lady Hanabi from training? It is good to see, Naruto, but what is this I hear of training, he asked, raising an eyebrow every so slightly. I was not aware she training this late in the day, nor that you were with her. Well I was just assigned as her sensei for the newly-formed Squad Eleven, which is replacing Squad Seven Inches Naruto said, squirming a bit as Hanabi snuggled into him, and continued sleeping. Ah, okay, anyways, I've taking on her, Konohamaru, and Moegi. She fell asleep during our training of her running laps around Squad Seven Training Grounds. Squad Seven is no more. And you've been assigned to be her sensei, this is all a lot to take in. Neji said, crossing his arms. Does this have something to do with Sakura being a pain recently? Yeah, I mean Squad Seven can reform if there's a shortage of highly-trained ninja needed for something, but yeah, she was driving me and Tamari nuts, this way, it will stop her from interrupting us so much. Naruto replied, to him. I also wanted to have my own squad and Grandma Sunade agreed, then I noticed Hanabi didn't have a squad and I needed a third member, so I picked her. Hmm, interesting, I'm surprised Lord Hiashi agreed to let Lady Hanabi join a ninja squad. Neji said, holding his chin. Nonetheless, we should bring her inside, follow me, Naruto. Sure, but I didn't ask Hiashi, nor did Grandma Sunade, I decided I wanted her, simple as that, he said, walking forward. Oh, and I'll see you around Asuka, I hope we can be friends. Asuka blushed and nodded in response to him but remained silent. Wait, you didn't get permission, Neji asked, as he came to a stop. If not, then I doubt he will allow this, especially since you stared training her before you asked him, though I do suppose you doing this is simply the unique Naruto Uzumaki way you follow, isn't it? Something like that, Naruto said, grinning. Well, aren't you going to lead me to her room? I mean she really light and all, but I do wanna get home at some point. Oh, yes, of course this way, my friend, Neji said, as he resumed walking inside and down the hall. It's not far to her room anyways. So, you a sensei, how's life treating you as a sensei so far? Neji asked, grinning. It is everything you thought it would be. Ha ha ha, you're a riot, Neji. I've been it for one day, today so I can't really say how it's been, Naruto said, thinking carefully. But I don't know one thing though, this little Firecracker, is one enormous pain in the I really felt like punting her across the training field today, and she's lucky I didn't. Neji could help but laugh lightly at this prospect. I must say, that puts an interesting image in my mind, though I'm sure Lord Hiashi might not appreciate such a thing, nor would Hanabi. Well if she would behave, then I wouldn't have had to even thought about it. Naruto replied, looking over at Neji. It really looks like most of the Hayugas beside Hanata, and now you, and that girl outside, Asuka, all have icicles stuck up their asses. Neji smirked and said, only you, would be so blunt about these things, Naruto. In any case we've arrived at Lady Hanabi's room. Oh, alright, could Slid open the door for me? Naruto asked walking up to the door. I need to put her in her bed and get a move on, before Tamari starts looking for me. Neji smirked again, and Slid opened the door for Naruto, who walked in, carrying Hanabi over to her bed. Naruto careful pulled back the covers and laid the girl down before covering her up. He undid her headband and put it next to her before standing upright, and walking over to Neji who was standing by the doorway. Well I'm off to relax for a while, get some dinner, and spend some time with Tamari, Naruto said, smiling. Do me a favor and tell Firecracker there, to meet me at Squad Eleven Training Fields tomorrow at six thirty AM sharp. If she doesn't show up, tell her I'm coming to get her myself. I'm still not sure what Lord Hiashi will think of all this, but I'll be sure to give, Firecracker, hear the message, Neji said, smirking. See you tomorrow, Naruto. Naruto gave a wave before running off to get home, stopping only to wish his new friend Asuka a good night, before continuing on his way. He made his way home and arrived to find Tamari sitting on the couch, drinking tea. Naruto, I haven't seen you all day, where were you? She asked putting down her tea. Quote dot dot, you look tired out, what were you doing exactly? Oh, I got my own squad to lead today, he replied smiling at her. Squad Eleven, with me, Konohamaru, and Hanabi Hayuga. She was a pain in the and I'm kind of tired from dealing with her. Hayuga, from the Hayuga Clan, I always though they were reserved and well behaved, Tamari said, in a curious tone. But, congratulations all the same, on the assignment. I hope you have loads of fun being a sensei. You're being sarcastic, aren't you? Naruto asked, smirking. Well you're the funniest girl I've ever met to be sure. Anyways, I just want to eat dinner relax and spend some time with most beautiful girl in the village, as soon as I find her. You're and you know that, Tamari said, grinning. Good thing I like you, or would just kick your little ass. If you can, bring it on blondie, he said, back grinning widely. You're asking for it now, Naruto kun, she said, smiling. But I know the easy way to defeat you, wanna see me do it? Bring it, he said, crossing his arms. She smiled before slowly walking over to him, making sure to sway her hips. She made her way to him and put her mouth by his ear before blowing some hot breath into it. I really want you, my Naruto kun, she said in a raspy voice causing to Naruto collapse to the floor with a dark red face and a little blood richly out of his nose. She grinned at him on the floor and walked away laughing. Way too easy, my Naruto kun, she said, walking into the kitchen. I guess I'll make him some ramen for when he recovers. Naruto recovered a few minutes later and went to find Tamari but the smell of ramen drew him to the kitchen instead. He walked in to find Tamari sitting there, eating ramen while several bowls of steaming hot ramen was at the place on the table he usually sat at. You Tamari are a goddess and I love you, Naruto said, quickly kissing her and diving right into the ramen. Tamari sat wide-eyed for a second before laughing and shaking her head. If I had no getting you ramen would make you say you love me, I guess I should have brought some before now, huh? Tamari said, laughing. Then again, I'm not sure if I should be happy you said you love me or disappointed it only was because I made you ramen that you said it. He stopped eating and looked at her before saying, Tamari, I do love really. And it wouldn't take ramen to make me say it, you don't really think that do you? Relax, I know that, I was just trying to mess with you, she replied smiling. Anyways, good night, I need to get some sleep, I've got things to do tomorrow. Iino invited me for a girls' day out. I'm not a girly girl, but it might be nice to talk to another female who isn't a psycho stalker of my fiancee. She walked to the doorway but before she left the room completely she said, by the way, Sunade sent a note saying she wanted to see us tomorrow afternoon. And, I love you too, Naruto kun, good night. Naruto ate the rest of his ramen and went to sleep with a big smile on his face. A beautiful girl didn't just like him, she loved him, and that was something he would cherish forever. Meanwhile back in the rain village, Sasuke was eating dango while wait for Madera to find clues on the elusive swordsman rumored to buy the village. He had already gathered supplies and was quite annoyed with waiting for the man to return. Hope you didn't wait too long, Genji, a voice said, to which Sasuke ignored, and continued eating his dango. I expect you to answer me next time, son, Madera said, sitting next to Sasuke. Or did you forget, Genji? Sasuke looked up and saw Sasuke looked up and saw Madera sitting there with his arms folded. Oh sorry, I forgot about the name, dad, he said, eating the last of the dango. Did you find a lead or not? I did in fact, a old, contact of mine confirmed that one of the new demon swordsman are living here. Though it's actually near the village, not inside, Madera said, standing up. Come, we have our supplies, don't we, we need to get some rooms for the night, as it is late, am I am tired. Well go find the swordsman tomorrow morning. Sasuke growled at him but followed anyway, he hated to admit it, and he wouldn't out loud, but Madera did have a point. So they got a couple of rooms at a hotel and went to their separate ways. Madera fell asleep almost immediately, though Sasuke laid awake for some time, thinking about the joy he would get at killing Naruto and burning the leaf village to the ground. I will slaughter you, Naruto, Sasuke said, before dozing off himself. Back in the leaf village, Naruto sneezed in his sleep causing him to roll over and mumble about giant pepper shakers attacking his ramen castle. It was the next day in Naruto, Moegi and Konohamaru were getting impatient, as they sat on the ground next to a tree at the Squad Seven Training Fields, waiting for Hanabi to show up. That's it, I had Neji tell her to be here at six thirty and I know he told her.
Naruto said, standing up. I'm going to drag her little here. But what about us, Naruto sensei? Moegi asked, looking up at him. Should we, train or wait? Naruto thought for a second before answering her. Probably best to give them something to do, yeah they can train. Yeah, you two can do laps till I return with Hanabi, he finally said, looking at both of them. I'll try to get back quickly, if for some reason I'm not back in like, point two zero minutes, then do some light sparring, no weapons, jutsus, just hand to hand, okay?
They both gave Naruto a nod and went right to running laps, while Naruto himself ran off towards the Hayuga estate. After jumping through the trees and then rooftops for a few minutes, he arrived at the front gates of the Hayuga Clan house. He walked through the gates and saw the Hayuga guard from the day before on duty.
Hey there, Asuka how's it going? He said, grinning as he walked up to her.
Naruto sama, I mean Naruto, hello, what brings you back to the Hayuga estate? She asked, walking over to him.
I'm here to drag Hanabi over to the Squad Eleven Training Grounds, he said, still grinning.
It seems she doesn't know about following orders to well from her sensei. I see, actually before I went on guard duty, I heard Neji-san trying to get Lady Hanabi to get ready and meet up with her squad, Asuka said, with sigh. Needless to say, she ignored him for the most part. Only Lord Hyashi can get her to do something without delay I'm afraid.
She's quite the little pain in the huh? Naruto said, shaking his head. Oh, well can I go on in and try to get her?
I would never say such a thing about Lady Hanabi. Asuka said, in a light tone. Oh and you will need to escort again, if you wish to go back into the house.
Oh okay, could you grab Neji again then? Naruto asked, putting his hands into his jacket pockets.
Of course, just a moment, she said, walking over to the doors. Excuse me, could you retrieve Neji-san? Someone is here for oh, Neji-san, Naruto is here. Hello, Naruto, Neji said nodding his head, as he walked into view.
I take it you're here for Lady Hanabi. Congratulations, you win the prize, Naruto said, folding his arms. Can you take to the little ankle biter?
Neji grinned but only said to follow him inside and he would take Naruto to Hanabi's room. They walked in silence through several short hallways until they came to a stop outside Hanabi's door. Naruto walked up to Hanabi's door and immediately started knocking on the door. Hanabi, it's your sensei, Naruto, he yelled out, still knocking. Get your little in gear, you kept the rest of your squad waiting long enough as it is.
Huh, Naruto? Well it's too bad cuz I don't have to listen to you, you commoner, Hanabi yelled from the other side of the door. You're just wasting your time being here, so go crawl back into the hole you came out of. That's it, Naruto said, sliding the door open hard and walking in, leaving a somewhat nervous Neji outside. Ah, what are you doing, get out of my room. Hanabi yelled keeping her blanket wrapped up around herself. I gave you no permission to enter. Tough, you need to get dressed now, Firecracker, Naruto said, wailing over to her bed. I'm your sensei and I said be at the training grounds at six thirty, it's now almost seven o'clock, so get dressed, now.
What is that yelling from done there? A male voice asked from down the hallway. Lord Hyashi, Neji said, startled. My apologies uncle, Hanabi's sensei is here trying to get her to get ready and join her squad, but she is refusing to. Hanabi, Hyashi yelled out, still standing at the end of the hall. I may not have approved of you being on a squad but I have more important things to deal with, so for now you will obey your sensei and get yourself moving to join your squad. Do I make myself clear, young lady?
Why, ye? Yes father, I understand, Hanabi said, wide-eyed still sitting on her bed.
Good, do not make a repeat habit of questioning orders from your superiors. Hyashi said, before walking around the corner and out of sight.
Okay then get ready, I said I would back quickly, Naruto said, tapping his foot impatiently. Fine, but you need to leave my room first, Hanabi stated, holding the blankets tightly. Oh no you don't, the minute I leave you'll just try to go back to sleep, Naruto said, raising an eyebrow. Let's go, are you insane, I cannot take down these blankets and get ready until you leave. She said angrily. And why not, he asked, confused. Am I missing something, you really are an idiot. I'm only wearing my, that is. I'm only in my underclothing right now, she said in a angry tone, while blushing. As if you have anything anyone wants to see at your age, he mumbled under his breath before walking to the door. Just make sure you hurry it up, I know girls take forever to get dressed and all. Fine, and I heard that rude comment you know. She yelled as he closed the door right before the pillow she chucked hit the door. By the way, he yelled through the door. If you're not ready in ten minutes, then I'm dragging you by your ankles all the way to the Squad Eleven Training Grounds, no matter how much or how little clothing you have on, so unless you want rug burn on your I suggest you get moving. Pervert, Hanabi yelled before she began getting dressed. About ten minutes later, and scowling Hanabi opened her door and walked out, dressed in her ninja apparel. About time, I though I really was going to have to drag you there. Naruto said, grinning. Come on, let's move. He ushered forward, and they walked out the door passing by the guard Asuka. Have a good day Lady Hanabi, Naruto, she said, smiling at Naruto. Thanks. You too Asuka, Naruto replied, waving to her. They walked out of the gates and Naruto crouched down holding his hands behind him. Someone hop on, you took like ten minutes to get ready and it took me about five minutes to get to your house, so we're going to do piggyback so I can get us there faster, he said, looking over his shoulder at her. Well, but, that is, such a thing is. Embarrassing, Hanabi said, blushing. Everyone will think I am a kid. That's because you are a kid. Besides just ignore them, they're idiots if they stop to comment on things as common as piggyback riding, Naruto replied back to her. Now come on, and make sure you hold on tight, I'll be moving fast and I don't want you falling off and getting hurt. But how fast will you be? She screamed as he bounced from rooftop to rooftop at blazing speeds, before jumping into the forest and heading towards the training fields. They finally arrived exactly four minutes later and landed in a crouch in front of Moegi and Konohamaru, startling them both. See that didn't take long at all, right Firecracker? Naruto said, grinning as he stood up. Hanabi, you okay back there?
Uh, she doesn't look so good boss, Konohamaru said, with a sweat drop.
Huh, Naruto said, looking over his shoulder. What do you mean? Indeed Hanabi did not look well at all. Her eyes were bugging out of her head, her teeth were gritted tightly together, her hair was sticking out in every direction and she was holding onto Naruto still like she was a vice grip. Hey, are you okay, Hanabi? Naruto asked, concerned as he crouched down to let her off. I don't think I'll be doing that ever again, do you remember how to speak, Hanabi? Never, again, ever, Naruto. She said, narrowing her eyes. Is, is there ground beneath me, yet? Yeah, you're fine Hanabi, Naruto said, letting the girl off his back. Okay then, today we're going to work on a few things. First, off do any of you three know your elemental chakra affinities? Naruto asked, looking at the three, as he waited for any response. I take this silence as a no. Good thing I remembered, or rather Tamari-chan reminded me, to bring this with me, some chakra paper. Does anyone here know how it works? He asked, handing each of them a piece.
That's easy, chakra paper is harvested from specially grown trees and when chakra is applied, it reacts in one of several different ways, depending on which chakra type you are better suited for. Hanabi said, crossing her arms, and smirking. It's common knowledge to all ninja.
Very good, Firecracker, Naruto said, patting the girl's head, gently.
However, you shouldn't just assume that all ninja know this. I didn't know what it was, since my sensei never taught it to my genon team.
So, one at a time I want you three to apply chakra to your piece of chakra paper so we can find out your elemental affinities, Naruto said, putting his hands in his janon vest pockets. First Moegi, then Konohamaru, and finally Hanabi, go. Konohamaru applied chakra to his piece and it ignited and turned to ash. Then Moegi did the same and her piece became soggy, and finally Hanabi applied chakra to hers and it tore in half. Huh, I gotta say even though I pretty much already figured out that Konohamaru would get fire style, and Moegi would get water, I really didn't think Hanabi's chakra nature would be wind, Naruto said, looking at the girl in question. That being said, you're pretty lucky in a few ways, my little firecracker.
I, I am, she asked confused. Why? Because one, it's called the battle nature due to it being great and deadly for both defense and offense, two, it's very rare in the fire country, and three, it's also one of my chakra affinities, so me and Tamari can teach you a few things, Naruto replied to the girl.
So let's get to work, shall we? Now Konohamaru, even though it's my second affinity, I only know a few fire jutsus, and I can't teach you one of them, since it's too dangerous and without special toad oil, you can't do it anyway. Naruto said, putting his hand on Konohamaru's shoulder. But I can teach you the less dangerous ones.
Really, awesome, let's go, I'll learn it real quick, believe it. Konohamaru yelled jumping up and down.
Calm down, scarf boy, Naruto said, smacking the boy in the back of his head. You're almost as bad as I was when I was your age. I'm going to send a clone with you to teach you some easy fire techniques I know.
Moegi, unfortunately I don't know any water jutsus, but I can send you in a clone to the library to look up some starter water techniques, that you can practice, he said, to her, smiling. I'll also being sending clone to find Kakashi sensei to bug him till he agrees to teach you some water jutsu tricks.
Well what about me, Hanabi asked, putting her hands on her hips. Are you and going to teach me some wind jutsus?
Nope, he said simply, grinning at her.
What do you mean, no? She said, raising her voice. Am I not good enough to teach? It is because of this morning.
Not at all, but I need to teach you how to wield wind chakra, before you can use it, Naruto replied to her. I'll showing you exercise on this, while my clone teaches Konohamaru about fire chakra. Kakashi sensei will hopefully teach Moegi about water. I could be persuaded too, Naruto, said Kakashi jumping down from a tree.
Kakashi sensei, Naruto exclaimed loudly. What are you doing here?
Oh, I was just in the neighborhood, and felt your massive chakra signature nearby. Kakashi said, putting his make-out tactics away in his pouch. I thought I'd stop by and see how life as a sensei was treating you.
Well good to see ya, sensei. And it's going pretty good, for the most part, just a few small snags, Naruto said, glancing at Hanabi. So will you help out Moegi?
Hm, okay, Kakashi said, giving his famous eye smile. If, dot you do me a favor in return.
What kind of favor, Naruto asked cautiously.
Is it anything, hard? Not at all, though to be honest. I'm not sure about what I want you to do, Kakashi said, standing in a thinking pose. How about, we just say you owe me one?
Owe you one what, Naruto asked Kakashi, confused somewhat.
What I mean is, you'll owe a favor of some sorts, at sometime in the future. Deal, Kakashi replied, looking down at Moegi, after Naruto nodded a yes. So, are you ready to learn about water jutsus, Moegi?
Sure, can I go na san, I mean sensei? Moegi asked, eagerly.
Sure, go for it Moegi-chan, Naruto said, nodding. Do your best, okay? I'll do great, believe it, sensei. Moegi said, smiling before running off, with Kakashi slowly following behind her. Naruto smiled back, before turning to look at Hanabi.
Okay. Grab two leaves for me off of a tree for me, if you would, he asked, folding his arms.
Any two leaves will do. Hanabi mumbled before plucking two leaves off of a nearby tree and walking back over to him. He took one and let her hold on to the other, which had her staring at it, curiously.
Okay, now what, smart guy? Hanabi asked, folding her arms, impatiently. What am I supposed to do with this leaf?
Keep your shirt on, shish. Hold it in your hand, and watch me, he said, shaking his head. Pay attention to what I do, and you may want to activate your Byakugan while you watch. She quickly activated her Byakugan and watched as chakra flowed up Naruto's arm, and into his hand, before it split the leaf in two. Naruto then looked over at her and grinned wildly.
Pretty cool, huh Firecracker? Naruto asked, looking at her. All you did was split a leaf in two, moron, she said, sneering at him.
True but I did it using my wind chakra, he said, proudly. If you can learn to cut a leaf in half, then you're one step closer to using your own wind chakra, my little firecracker.
Huh, how do you do that? Hanabi asked looking at her leaf. What's the difference between using wind and regular chakra? Why can only wind chakra cut through a leaf?
Well, try to channel chakra into the leaf and see what happens, he said, grinning. Go on, try if you want. I bet since I'm a Hayuga with superior chakra control, I can do it, she said, grinning back. Just step back and witness the superior power of the Hayuga clan. Hanabi tried pumping her chakra into it the same way she did for the chakra paper a few minutes prior. But after a few minutes, she was grinding her teeth in frustration over nothing happening, and gave up. It is impossible, you must have cheated somehow, she said, crossing her arms, angrily.
So much for the superior power of the Hayuga clan, huh, Firecracker? Naruto asked, smirking slightly.
You have to keep trying to focus and sharpen your chakra, in order to cut through the leaf. But I just tried and I failed. I am a Hayuga and I must obtain perfection in all I do, just like I was forced to learn from father, Hanabi said, growling in a frustrated manner. If I can not do it, then what is the point? Shouldn't I focus on another way of learning to use wind chakra?
There's no need to get too frustrated, Hanabi, Naruto said, crouching down and putting his hands on her shoulders. I was also really frustrated when I was first taught this, but if I had given up so easily, then I never would have learned to use my wind chakra or save Kakashi sensei, Iino, Choji and Captain Yamato from that really tough Akatsuki guy the first fought and beat. Just believe in yourself, you can do it, he said, standing up. I believe in you, and I know you can do it, if you try. So get to it, and don't worry, I'll be here to help you along the way. Huh, Hanabi stated, looking at him strangely. He wants to help me, why? Father always said if you're too weak to do it on your own, then you should just give up altogether, but Naruto, he's. I suppose if I don't try, you'll never let me hear the end of huh? Fine, I'll keep trying, sensei, Hanabi said, blushing a bit. What was that, did you call me, sensei? Naruto asked, surprised. Jay, just let me try the leaf thing in peace and quiet, moron.
She replied, turning her head away from him.
Okay, I'll be practicing a few wind techniques that Temori's teaching me while you, do, he said, chuckling as he walked a few feet away. If you need help, just give a shout, okay, firecracker?
Um, yeah, alright, she absently said, as she tried to concentrate on cutting into the leaf with her chakra. Hanabi tried to concentrate on her task at hand, but became more and more frustrated at making so little progress after an hour. She not even put la single cut into the leaf and was angry and ashamed at such abysmal progress. Damn it, she yelled out in anger, stomping off to the edge of the pond in the training area, where she flopped down to the ground and folded her arms. I'm a hyuga, I am supposed to be perfect, and yet I cannot get such a simple thing right.
Why? Because you're trying for perfection and only stressing yourself out over it, Naruto said, walking up and flopping onto the ground next to her. I can get just as frustrated as anyone when I'm trying to learn something new, but messing up, but getting stressed over it is pointless and unhealthy. Quote comma dot dot quote. Why are you getting stressed over learning to use wind chakra, anyway? He asked, looking at the water. When I was little and got stressed or angry or whatever I used to talk to the old man Hokage, and it usually made me feel better. Maybe if you talk to me, you'll feel better. It's nothing, I'm just not making any progress on using wind chakra.
Hanabi replied, looking forward. Perhaps, perhaps, I should just give up on it, I will only end up embarrassing both myself and you.
That's bullshit, so what you haven't made any progress after an hour, big deal. You just need to practice a bit more, that's all, Naruto said, looking over at Hanabi. And I really don't see how you're an embarrassment to anyone. I'm not ashamed of you, I mean I made about the same amount of progress my first time learning the leaf exercise. Just try again, and go for a small cut instead of cutting the entire leaf in half. I believe in you, so don't worry so much, it'll give you wrinkles. Or at least that's what I've heard anyway.
Are, are you sure? Hanabi asked, looking up at Naruto as he stood up. What if I don't do any better?
Then I'll find a way to help you, till you can do it, he replied, walking away. I'm your sensei and friend, and it's my job to make you, Konohamaru, and Moegi into great ninjas, so I'll do whatever it takes to help you three. Just take a few deep breaths, relax, and then go try again. And if you need help, make sure you come ask this time, instead of getting angry and stomping off, okay?
Um, yes, Naruto sensei, she said back, watching him walk away. And, thank you, Naruto. He gave her a grin before turning around and going back across the field. Hanabi took a few deep breaths and walked over to A, grabbing a leaf off of it. Okay, relax and take your time, try for a small cut of any size, Hanabi said out loud to her herself. I can do this, I will not fail this time. Once again, Hanabi set to work, trying to cut into the leaf, only this time taking her time, and going slowly. After several hours, she was still going at going at it, when Naruto walked up to her.
Hey, you made a few cuts. Naruto said, out loud, making her jump.
Sensei, yes, I did make a few cuts, but only and few small ones, Hanabi said, looking at the leaf. I didn't do very well, after several more hours, did I?
Are you kidding me? You did great, Hanabi Chan. Naruto said grinning. I'm really proud of you. Make sure to keep up the good work, alright?
You're. Proud of me? Hanabi asked, in disbelief. I know you said, you'd wouldn't be upset if I didn't do well. But, you're happy that I made this small amount of progress?
Sure, why wouldn't I be? He asked, as he ruffled her hair playfully. Why don't you take a break, I'm going to go check on Konohamaru and Moegi. I'll be backing a minute, okay?
Hanabi couldn't help but smile, and blush as Naruto ran off to her teammates. Father never praises me for doing anything right, but sensei, maybe Naruto's not so bad after all, I will make you even more proud Naruto, I promise. A few minutes later, Naruto returned with Konohamaru, Moegi and Kakashi following behind him.
So, how did you two do? Hanabi asked, looking at her teammates.
I made some water flow a little bit, but I couldn't do it very long, Moegi replied, swing her ninja sandal. But I'm sure I'll do better, if I keep practicing.
That's right, you will. Well done Moegi Chan, Naruto said, patting the grill on the head. Keep up the good work. I can already do the burning ash jutsu, more or less, but I did just okay with a basic fire jutsu, Konohamaru said, rubbing the back of his head, sheepishly, like Naruto would. Yeah, and I wish you would have told me beforehand that you already knew a fire just you, Naruto said, back to him. Even if you didn't know your element, if you had told me you learned a fire technique already, I would have been able to help you better. Next time, let me know sooner, okay Konohamaru?
Sorry boss, I mean sensei, Konohamaru replied, to him.
So what's next? Well, I assume all of you know how to walk on trees using chakra, right? Naruto asked looking around.
Yup, sure thing, yes I was taught that some time ago.
Good, how about water walking? He then asked, not getting a response this time. Okay, we'll learn water walking. Over to the water you three. We'll, you have fun, Naruto. I might swing by tomorrow to help Moegi, again, if you want, Kakashi said, looking over at Naruto. Okay, thanks sensei, see ya tomorrow, Naruto A S I D, waving to him. Let's move, you three. Once at the water, Naruto turned around and looked at his three students. Now some would say, that if you can learn to walk on trees using chakra, then water walking is a cake walk, he said, walking back and forth in front of them, but that's bullshit. Water walking is harder, and different than tree walking. Way harder, when you tree walk, you use your chakra constant to walk on water, you need to constantly adjust it on the go, he said, coming to a stop. I want you three to come get into the water, and stand there in it with me. Let's go, Naruto rolled up his pant legs and walked over into the water, standing there. Come on you three, let's move. And if you don't want to get your shoes wet, take them off. The three of his students took of their ninja sandals and walked into the water, to join him. Good, now well walk into the part that's like like a four deep or so, he said, walking through the water. Let's move, brats. Konohamaru and Moegi followed him and stood next to him. Hanabi just stood there, not following. Naruto looked over at her, sighed, knowing that another fight might start.
There is no way I'm getting my pants wet in the water, she said, crossing her arms.
Just because, Konohamaru doesn't mind getting his pants wet, and Moegi is wearing a skirt, doesn't mean I am. If you don't want to get your pants wet, then you got one of two choices. Naruto said, putting a hand on his waist. Either roll up your pant legs like I did, or take your pants off, either way, get your over here, Hanabi. She immediately rolled up her pant legs, not wanting to do the alternative and walked over to the others. I'm here, can we get started, already, she said, folding her arms. What do we do first? Well, focus your chakra onto the soles of your feet and try to practice shifting the amounts. Naruto said, as he applied chakra to his feet and walked across the water. You'll need to concentrate on burying the amount of chakra at first. But after you get the hang of it, you'll begin doing it automatically. Real quick standing there, try it out, he said, to them, grinning. Just do your best and I'll be proud of you, whatever, if any progress you make. Keeping mind, Moegi, Hanabi, you two have better chakra control, but smaller reserves. He said, looking over at them. If you two feel tired out, tell me and take a break, got it? They all begin trying to stand on water, while Naruto did handstands on the water, and walked across it. After only a little while, Moegi and Hanabi became tired, especially, Hanabi who had already used a bit of chakra on her leaf exercise. The both let their feet sink through the foot of water to the bottom, and walked into the shallow part of the pond. Good job you two, take a break and let your chakra refill, Naruto yelled, doing a backflip on the water. Hey, Konohamaru, take a break, alright? And come over here, alright? You three, we're going to go get some ramen to eat and do a mission afterwards. He said, grinning. Last one to eat chiraku's, is a weirdo. Naruto ran off laughing, with Konohamaru giving chase. Moegi, grinned and looked at Hanabi. Come on, let's go, she said, taking Hanabi's arm and pulling her along. We don't want to be called weirdos, right? After Hanabi and Moegi arrived, fending Naruto and Konohamaru already scarfing down ramen. Hanabi smiled a bit at her teammates and sensei, thinking to herself that maybe being on squad eleven, would a good experience after all. She sat down to join them, and after lunch the four of them walked off to the Hokage's tower to get their first mission as squad eleven. They ended up with A D mission to unload supplies for Tenten's Famil's weapon shop and took nearly an hour get everything unloaded. Naruto decide they could have the rest of the day off to practice or whatever else they wanted to do. Konohamaru ran oof to do some training, while Moegi decided to spend some time with her mom before doing some training as well. Hanabi said she needed to get home, and once again Naruto walked her home, since it was on T H E way to his own, and as a hyuga, she needed a escort. After arriving in front of the Haigwa Clan estate, Naruto crouched down in front of Hanabi. Look, you did great today, no matter what your father may say to you otherwise. You should be proud of your acoplishments with the wind chakra training and water walking, just like I'm proud of you, Naruto said, to her smiling. By the way, Moegi and Konohamaru already know this, but if you need anything, like someone to talk to, or just to listen to you you, you can come and look me up at my house, anytime, day or night, got it? Hanabi blushed and nodded unused to someone being so nice, especially after giving him such a hard time. She watched him get the attention of the on-duty guard, telling him Hanabi was back, and then give her a wave goodbye. Thank you sensei, she said smiling, before she walked inside the gates and entered the house. My team may be strange, but, I like them. I hope father lets me stay on the team, she though as she walked to her room to take a bath and rest for a bit before resuming her training. It was the next day and Naruto stumbled out of bed, yawning as he got dressed and walked down the stairs to see Tamari sitting and drinking juice. She saw him and greeted him with a kiss, on the lips, that had him blush deeply. Really, blushing, this isn't the first time we've kissed. Tamari said, grinning. But I'll forgive you, since you're cute. Thanks. You're cute too, I mean pretty, Naruto said, smiling. So what's today's plans? Since it's the weekend, I want you to myself, Tamari said, grinning. We've been busy, these past few days, and I want to spend time with my adorable fiancee. What's a, fiancee? Naruto asked, confused about the term. Is that me, so cute and clueless? It means you're my soon-to-be husband, Tamari replied, putting her glass in the sink. Now what shall we do today? Naruto put his hand on his chin and thought for a moment before saying, hmm. Ramen, Tamari calmly smacked him in the back of his head, as she sat down next to him. Please try to be serious, Naruto. Tamari said, laying her head on his shoulder. Should we go on a date? Or a picnic? Or something like that, she asked, closing her eyes. And of course some training afterwards. Hmm, how about we do the picnic thing? Naruto said, looking at her. That could be fun, alright, you can make us a picnic lunch, and we'll train afterwards, Tamari said, lifting her head off his shoulder. But what should we do till then? Um, not sure about um, was all Naruto could say before Tamari grabbed his head and pulled him forward, locking lips with him. Tamari grinned as she pulled away. I think we can have some fun, before our picnic, huh? I think I like your idea of fun, Naruto said grinning as he kissed her back. I'm still not too good with girls, but I'll try, believe it. Less talking, more kissing, Tamari said, pulling him forward. A doorbell suddenly rang out, interrupting them and Tamari pulled away, with a irritated look on her face. This had better be important, she said standing up and straightening her clothes. You get the door, cause if I went, depending on who it is and what they want, I might end up punching them in the face. He he he, sure, be right back, Naruto said, racing to the door. Opening it he found himself face-to-face with Hanabi hyuga. Her arms were crossed and she looked a bit on the pissed side. Hanabi, hey, what are you doing here? He asked casually. What do you mean, what am I doing here? I have been waiting at the training grounds for nearly an hour now for you, Konohamaru and Moegi to show up, she said in aloud, though classically hyuga-style calmness. Oh right, I told the others but not you. Or didn't I? Either way you three don't have training or missions again till Monday, Naruto said, putting his hand in his pockets. Sorry about that, that's my fault for not tell you. I see, sorry to bother you then, Hanabi replied with a voice and look that while appearing calm had hints of sadness to them. I will see you then, sensei. Damn my good nature, Naruto mumbled to himself. Hold on a sec Hanabi Chan, I'll be back in a minute, so stay here. Tamari, would you mind if I invited my student to lunch with us later today? Naruto asked, walking back into the kitchen. I promise for amazing romantic dinner tonight in exchange. Um, why do you want them to join us so badly? Tamari asked, partially confused. Well, it's hard to explain but I could see she was. Sad I guess is the right word when I told her I wouldn't be seeing her till Monday, he responded. Honestly, I think she's lonely, I mean she's from the hyuga branch, and only has her sister in the main house, and from what Neji told me, the side branch hates the main house and doesn't interact with them unless absolutely required to. Quote comma dot. Fine, I suppose you having all this love to spread around is just part of your charm, my Naruto kun, Tamari said, smiling, before waking up to him and grabbing him by his collar. That being said, I expect our dinner date tonight to be the best damn night of my life, being only outdone by our eventual honeymoon after we get married. Got it, I love you Tamari Chan my fiery future wife, Naruto said, grinning as he kissed her, while still be held by his collar. Cute, I love you too, you knucklehead, she said. Letting go of him, go let the little brat in, I wanna see this student of yours. Several minutes later Naruto returned walking behind the short lavender-eyed girl. So, you're one of Naruto kun's little squad brats, huh? Tamari asked, smirking at the girl. What's your name, although scowling from being called a brat, she answered nonetheless. My name is Hanabi hyuga of the hyuga clan, and I am not a little brat. She's got spunk, I'll give her that, Tamari said, still smirking. So, oh honorable hyuga, how do you like being on this knucklehead's team so far? Naruto sensei is, interesting, but I like him, Hanabi replied, thinking for a second. Although our first squad meeting was, irritating. Huh, whatever. So, are you going to join us for lunch today? Tamari asked, standing up. Join you for lunch? Hanabi asked, looking over Naruto. You want me to join you for lunch later? Yup, you can hang out and train with us, then we're having a picnic nearby, Naruto said, grinning. Of course next time it should be all three of my students, but since I know that both Moegi and Konohamaru are spending time with their families, today it will be just you, me, and Tamari Chan here. If you are certain that it is not inconvenient, then, I will join both of you, Hanabi said, bowing her head slightly. So, Tamari san, have you been enjoying your time as Naruto sensei's fiancee? I should also congratulate you on the upcoming marriage as well I suppose. Ha 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 ha, stop being so damn formal little girl, speak like a girl your age should, completely improper, Tamari said, still giggling. Or all hyugas so formal and uptight? I know at least Neji hyuga has loosed up a little from what I've heard. I'm not always proper you know, Hanabi said loudly, blushing from embarrassment. I can vouch for that, Naruto said grinning as he put his arm around her shoulder. Little firecracker here, has a mouth that would make a sailor's jaw drop, and I speak from personal experience. Little firecracker here, has a mouth that would make a sailor's jaw drop, and I speak from personal experience. Hanabi embarrassed even further now had a dark red face, that was only visible until she turned her head from view and slipped form under his arm. So, how about go do some training for right now, Naruto kun? Tamari asked, walking over to him. Come on, let's have some breakfast before heading out to our training grounds. For breakfast, I have already eaten though, Hanabi said, looking at her. What did you have, Naruto asked, looking at the girl. Cereal, was her simple reply. That's it, you're eating with us Hanabi, Naruto said, walking her forward and sitting her in a chair. We're going to be training until probably eleven or so, and that's like nearly five hours. You're gonna need a lot more energy than a bowl of cereal will give you. He's right, you're going to burn a lot calories during training and need a good breakfast, Tamari said in agreement. So you want me to teach you how to cook some more things, Naruto kun? I was thinking a healthy but delicious breakfast of grilled salmon, rice balls, miso soup and tsukumono. We already have leftover miso soup and rice that can be heated up, we just need to grill up some fish. Okay, sounds good, you grill the fish, I'll heat up the rice, and miso soup, Naruto said, following Tamari into the kitchen. By the way, you can either sit there, go into our living room or come into the kitchen with us, Hanabi. I, I think I will follow you into the kitchen, we are not allowed into the kitchen at the hyuga mansion, and I have always wanted to see the inside of one, Hanabi said, walking behind them. Talk about sheltered, we need to get you to explore this world of ours a bit more, huh? Naruto said as they entered the kitchen. Okay Tamari, let's start. Fine, but calm it down a bit, knucklehead, Tamari said with a smile. It won't take too long for the fish, but you need to wait before you heat up the rice and soup. Okay, so Hanabi, what do you think of our kitchen? Naruto asked as he sat down on a stool by the kitchen island in the middle of the room. Nice huh, by the way you can sit, you don't have to stand. Oh of course, I'm aware of that, I was just looking around, Hanabi replied, sitting next to him on another stool. After a short time passed, Tamari told Naruto he could begin cooking the rice and miso soup. He grabbed the leftover rice and soup from the fridge and began heating it up, while Hanabi watched the two of them cook. I wonder if they would teach me how to cook, Hanabi wondered to herself. Ten minutes later breakfast was down and the three of them sat down and ate, while chatting a bit. After eating Naruto made a few clones to do dishes while him, Tamari, and Hanabi made their way to the private training grounds. Whoa, and I thought the training grounds at the hyuga estate were large, Hanabi commented as they enter Avatar with a small pond, trees, rocks of different sizes and even a little area covered in sand. It has object for most ninjutsu types doesn't it? Yup, from what Tsunade and some papers I found in the house, this was a training ground designed to accommodate a ninja with any of the known chakra types, Naruto said proudly. You can practice your that wind chakra exercise here, while me and Tamari do a bit of light sparing before doing solo techniques we've been working on. I'll come over and help you in a little bit. Hanabi nodded and walked over near the pond and proceeded to practice using wind chakra. It wasn't hard, since as a hyuga with perfect chakra control, she adapted to it very quickly. She looked over at her sensei as he and Tamari practiced sparing, and still could believe how comfortable she felt around him. He was rude, annoying, sarcastic, and knew how to push her buttons to the breaking point at which she forgot her manners as a hyuga and told him off in a very unladylike manner. Still, it was refreshing to be treated like everyone else, instead of a untouchable object. Everyone had always treated her like something that need to be treated differently, and was kept away from other kids her age to prevent them from passing on bad habits to her. She had always wanted friends, but couldn't thanks to her father and the hyuga council. It had took a lot for the hyuga clans to even allow her and Hanata to go to the ninja academy at all, and that was only because they thought Hanata was useless, a fact which was no longer though by her or them, and they believed Hanabi had great potential and would make the leaf village ninja forces stronger with her presence until it was decide whether her or Hanata would become clan heir. Naruto was thinking about Hanabi and how she was growing on him as a little annoying sister he had never had. So what do you think of little firecracker there? Naruto asked as he dodged a blast of wind from Temori's fan. She odd huh, I haven't interacted with her enough, but from what you've told me she's a little pain in the ass, Tamari said, blocking a kick from Naruto. She also has a lot of potential, but a little too uptight in some ways. Yeah but I think that's like a hyuga thing, except for a select few members of their clan that is, Naruto said, as he summoned several clones and had them charge at her, trying to grab her by the arms to hold her down. Shadow clone ladder slam, the clone didn't keep a hold of Tamari for very long but they did long enough to let Naruto grab the two other clones by the feet and swing them like a ladder into her, knocking her back. She almost hit a tree if not for Naruto having a clone catch her preventing her from injury. Good catch, but it's time for payback, she said, stabbing the clone with a kanae after it set her upright. This is a power but easy to learn wind technique I'm going to teach you. She grinned as she opened her battle fan to one moon and pulled it back before swinging it forward releasing a small tornado at Naruto and his clones. Wind style, great slashing tornado, Naruto summoned a mass of clones to absorb the impact though after they were destroyed he still got thrown back a ways. He summoned a toad in midair and had it land on a nearby tree, before grabbing him by the wrists and stopping him from going any further. Naruto dropped from the tree to the ground after the toad dispelled itself after giving a wave to him. Damn Tamari, that kind of hurt, Naruto said, walking over to her. You have got to teach me how to do that. Well I don't have to teach you squat, but you're a great guy, my fiancee, and I already said I would, Tamari said, pulling out a scroll and releasing a battle fan from it. So, here you can use my extra battle fan till you get your own. Do you know how to charge wind chakra into weapons? It's not too hard, Yasuma Serutobi gave me one of his spare trench knives a few years back, and taught me how to do it, Naruto said, looking at her. In the case of a battle fan, all you have to do is mold your wind chakra into the fan as you pull it back. You push the chakra forward and out of the fan is swing it, releasing a gust of wind that's strengthened by your chakra. That's what make it different than the amount of wind that's released by swinging the fan without using chakra. Tamari said, handing him the fan. As you can see and feel it's smaller than the one I use. But it took me a while to get used to using my big one here and it takes a bit of physical strength to swing it since it's made of chakra channeling metal. Yours it too, but it's a bit lighter than mine. Essentially, yours is a trainer's fan, that those new to wielding wind chakra and battle fans use it first. Okay, as I used to say, let's run wild. Naruto said, before molding his wind chakra, before letting it go, harmlessly. Wait, before I do, I wanna check on Hanabi, see how's she doing with the leaf cutting exercise, I'll be right back, Tamari Chan. Hey Hanabi, how's you wind cutting exercise going? Naruto asked, walking over to her. You making a lot of progress. Yes, I can cut it in half now, sensei, Hanabi said, holding up a leaf she had split in half. Now what, great job, I figured with your chakra control it'd be easy, Naruto said, picking a rock off the ground. Now do the same, thing, with this rock. With a rock, Hanabi asked, raising an eyebrow. Is it harder? A lot, harder, you have to push out a lot more chakra to cut into it. Do small cuts in it till you can eventually cut it in half in one slice, he said, pushing some chakra into the rock he held, until it's split in half. Remember, you have to split your chakra in two, then narrow and sharpen it, grinding the two parts against one another as if sharpening a blade. That's how a summa sensei taught me to do it. Okay, I'll try, Hanabi said, as she picked up a rock and focused her chakra. Well good luck, if need any pointers, just yell, Naruto said, going back over to Tamari. Okay then Tamari Chan, time to try out that move of yours. By all means, show me what you got, Naruto kun, Tamari said, grinning, and holding up her fan to use as a shield. Pour your chakra into the fan before swinging it like I did. Right, Naruto said, pulling back the fan and pouring a huge amount of chakra into it before swinging it at her. Wind style, great slashing tornado, he swung his fan and unleashed a tornado that far larger than hers, making her gulp at the immense size of it and used a replacement jutsu to get out of the way. The tornado picked up dirt, leaves, and rocks as it smash itself into a large oak tree nearby, destroying it in the ground around its base. I have two words and a statement for you, Naruto. First, holy shit, Tamari said, looking where the tree used to be. That and I think you used a bit too much chakra for a spar. However if that had been an enemy, you would have ended the fight in one shot. Sorry about that, you're okay right? Naruto asked as Hanabi walked over. Oh, hey Hanabi, what's up? That, was insane, sensei, she said, looking at the debris along with Tamari. A little overboard perhaps? I'm fine Naruto, but she's right, Tamari said, looking back at him. It's, not your fault due to your enormous chakra reserves but still, you should try to make a less destructive version. E-H-H-H, I'll try, Naruto said, rubbing the back of his neck, blushing. So, how about I send some clones off to practice that move elsewhere, and then me and Hanabi can spar, so I can see how's she's doing. You know she can cut the leaf in half now, and I have her doing the rock. Good work, how about you spar against me first, Hanabi? Tamari asked, putting fan away to the side. I've been working on taijutsu over the past few years, even if I don't use it very often. I'd like to test myself against you. Firecracker, Hanabi looked somewhat peeved at someone beside Naruto calling her that nickname, but brushed it oof, and settled into the classic gentle fist stance. Tamari grinned and waited in place, ready for her to attack. Is she going to attack or not? Hanabi thought to herself, I have to strike, catch her off-guard. She pumped chakra into her legs and shot forward at her trying to hit her with a strike, to cut of the flow of chakra to her arm. Tamari moved to the side, though Hanabi still grazed her left shoulder. It wasn't a direct hit, but Temori's arm felt somewhat numb, nonetheless. Tamari, swung her fan with her right arm, and partially with her numb left one, blowing a heavy blast of wind at Hanabi. Hanabi wished she had known how to do the rotation move, like her cousin Neji did, because she could really have used it at that moment. The wind hit her at full force, despite her best efforts to resist, and she was thrown back several feet. Hanabi skidded to a stop, panting. Damn, she tossed me back with that wind attack, like I was nothing. Enough, Hanabi, Tamari said, closing her fan. That's good enough for now, so Naruto, after she masters using wind chakra, I think a defensive wind technique is in order, would do you think? What finished already? Hanabi asked, getting out of her stance. Why so fast, I just wanted to see your strengths and weaknesses in a small spar, Tamari said, walking over to Naruto. You're great for causing damage, but you don't really have any defensive moves to call upon in a battle. That need to change, I take it you can't use the hyuga rotation move, right? She asked, putting her hands on her hips. I probably could, if father taught me, or Neji san did. Hanabi replied, Neji learned it on his own, but he is a rare genius, I would need to be taught by someone who already knows how to do it. We'll then, you better hurry up and learn to use your wind chakra, so I can teach you and Naruto a defensive wind technique, Tamari said, stretching her arms out. Now though let's do our individual training. For the next several hours the three trained on their own. Naruto summoned fifty more shadow clones to add to the others he still had in the forest practicing the move Tamari had shown him. He had half of them work on doing a resengan with only one hand instead of two, and the other twenty-five work on lessening the damage of the wind style, resensura can move. After training separately, Naruto slowly dispelled his clones and the three of them gathered together and ate lunch. Tamari couldn't help but grin and Naruto ate rather sloppily and Hanabi told him as her sensei he should set a better example and eat properly. He had responded by sticking out his tongue at her, and continued eating as he usually did, despite her protests. After lunch, Hanabi said she should probably get back to the hyuga estate, so she could rest a bit before for her training with her father. She bid Naruto and Tamari goodbye and went with the clone Naruto made to escort her home. Make sure to rest up tomorrow, cause it's back to training and missions on Monday. Naruto yelled to her as she and the clone walked off. And tell Hanata and Neji I said hi when you see them. After waving goodbye Tamari and Naruto went back inside to chat and relax. So, our wedding is in around a month's time, Naruto said, as the sat down on the couch. Are you, excited? Quote comma dot. Ye, I think I am, Naruto, Tamari replied, smiling. I wasn't sure at first, but you're a pretty great guy. And I'm glad you're going to be my husband. Tamari snuggled up against him and pulled his arm around her. After sitting there for a while they both drifted off to sleep. Several hours later, a pair of anbu appeared outside his house and knocked on the door. Lord Namakesh, we bring a message from Lady Tsunade, one of them, wearing a dragon mask said, out loud. Hm, I think I hear snoring. So if he's asleep, how are we supposed to deliver the message from Lady Tsunade? The other one wearing a bird anbu mask, said. Should we use body flicker to get inside? Don't even try it, have you forgotten this is the mansion used by the first, second and fourth Hokages? Dragon asked his partner, disregarding whatever protections the first two Hokages had, the fourth was a seal master. Last time someone tried to teleport inside here, they were in the hospital on life support for three months. Never ever, attempt such a thing. I, I see, bird said, gulping. Well then, back to the Hokage. Nothing else we can do, Dragon replied, looking over at him. Let go report to her. Several minutes later the two anbu appearing sighed the Hokage's office and relayed what had happened. They were dismissed and Tsunade walked over to a framed photo of her grandfather, the first Hokage. She did several hand seal and focused her chakra until it slid open, revealing a small vault. She withdrew one of several scrolls, placed it on her desk and opened it before biting her thumb and spreading the blood on the scroll. Summoning jutsu, Tsunade said, stepping back as a small toad appeared on the scroll. Welcome, I need your assistance. Lady, Tsunade, how, did you summon me? The toad asked, bewildered. Jiraiya once gave me several scrolls sealing with his chakra so I could summon a toad if it was necessary. Tsunade replied, sitting down. Naruto is at the fourth's mansion, and I need you to deliver a message to him. I see, makes sense, giving that the master Namakesh was a seal master, couldn't get through his protection seals, huh? The toad asked, smirking. Sure, I'll deliver a message to Naruto, what is it? Just tell him and Tamari to report here as soon as he can, she replied, folding her hands. That's it, of course, see ya around Lord Hokage, the toad said, disappearing in a puff of smoke. The toad summoned himself to inside the mansion, and appeared near Naruto. Got himself a girlfriend huh, must be the Tamari person she mentioned. The toad though is sat there for a moment. He flicked his tongue out and hit Naruto gently across his face with it. Huh, what, Naruto said, opening his eyes and wiping wetness from his face, that he assumed was drool. A toad, I didn't summon you, Lady Tsunade did, using a scroll given to her by Jiraiya with his chakra in it, so she could summon us if needed, the toad replied. I have a message from Lady Tsunade for you and, I assume this girl is Tamari. Is she your girlfriend, fiancee? Actually, Naruto said, grinning. She beautiful huh, but we'll kick your three weeks from yesterday at the drop of a hat. Fiancee, you're getting married, wait till ma and pa hear this, the toad said, grinning. I assume they're invited to the wedding. Of course they are, let them know I'll give them the exact date in as soon as possible, Naruto said, giving a small nod. See ya around, the toad nodded before dispelling itself leaving Naruto to wake up Tamari. She wasn't too happy about having to wake up and leave her warm spot, but as Tsunade was now her leader too, she didn't have much choice. She wasn't too happy about having to wake up and leave her warm spot, but as Tsunade was now her leader too, she didn't have much choice. She stood up and the two of them smoothed out their clothing, she was wearing the outfit from Five Cage Summit, and she attached her scroll to the back of her waist. After they were ready, the two of them used body flicker, as she had taught him, to appear on the roof of the Hokage tower by the windows. Yo, you wanted us, grandma? Naruto asked, as he and Tamari entered through the window. Naruto, Tamari, what is it with the people in your training legacy? Tsunade asked, shaking her head. Minato, Jiraiya, and now you, I hope you don't teach your students to enter the Hokage office through the window instead of the door. Maybe, you never know, Naruto said smiling. So what did you want? I have a mission for you, Naruto and Tamari, Tsunade said, pulling out a scroll from her desk. It's a C rank mission for you too. Sweet, I think I'll bring my team with me, give tem, what I assume is their first C rank mission, Naruto said rubbing his hands together eagerly. This will mean they've done one mission of each rank. When do we go? Calm down, Naruto, first off, yes you may make it a team eleven mission, and secondly, don't you wanna hear what the mission is first? Tsunade said, leaning back in her chair. Oh right, oh knew that, Naruto said blushing a bit. So what is it? It's a escort mission from the land of waves, I'm sure you're more than familiar with that place, she replied, from across her desk. You still wanna go I assume? You bet, grandma, I get to see Tizuna, and Tsunami and Inari too, Naruto said, excitedly. So when do we leave, Lady Tsunade? Tamari asked, folding her arms. Tomorrow morning, Tsunade replied. You are to go to the village and meet Tizuna, you will then escort him here. He is needed to fix up some places that were damaged during the war. Most of the important buildings were already fixed a while ago, but a few areas need to be fixed still. Tizuna said he would be more than happy to come here and do work for us again. He also request your team specifically. So since squad seven is no more, you will go? Okay, then I can't wait. Wait, I need to tell my squad about this, Naruto said, looking at the Hokage. Can you bring them here? They should be here in a few minutes, I figured you would want this to be a squad eleven mission, Tsunade said, back to him. It wasn't more than a few minutes later when there was a knock on the door. Tsunade said for them to come in, and Hanabi, Moegi, and Konohamaru walked in. Yo, guess what, we're going on A C rank mission tomorrow morning, Naruto said, grinning. Sweet huh, Konohamaru and Moegi both grinned back and nodded while Hanabi spoke up. I will need to ask for permission to go on this M S Sion from my father tonight, Hanabi said, to her sensei. Bullshit, you're going, Heashi himself could tell me you're not going and I'd still take you along, Naruto said, folding his arms. He's not your squad leader, I am. If he doesn't like it, then I'll have to kick his ingan then bring you with us. Hanabi went wide-eyed and slightly blushed while Tsunade and Tamari grinned. He's right, to a degree anyway, your father has no say if you take missions, Tsunade said, in agreement. Neither him nor the Hayuga clan have any say if you take missions while you're on a squad. Tell him if you want, but let him know that both myself and your sensei have the authority have you take this and any other mission without his permission. Tell him what I said too, Naruto said, before getting hit on the head by Tamari. Ow, that wasn't necessary, either way, I want all three of you pack for the mission tonight, and meet me and Tamari at the main gate tomorrow morning at say, eight o'clock. Nodding, the three gennen were dismissed and left the room shortly before Naruto and Tamari did as well. Naruto was excited but managed to keep calm enough the rest of the day as he and Tamari went back home and packed for the mission. After packing they ate dinner and gave each other a kiss goodnight and went to their respected rooms for bed. Man, I get prompted, my own team, I'm soon going to marry a beautiful konoi chi and now I get to see the old man, his daughter, and grandson from the land of waves too. Naruto thought as he laid on his bed. I can't wait for tomorrow for my team's first mission away from the village, that's right, this is the first time my squad is leaving the village on a mission, and it's the same place where I first W ned on a mission out of the Leaf Village. I can't sleep, I need some advice on this. But I don't wanna wake Tamari, hem maybe I'll go take a walk, Naruto said in a low voice. Naruto got dressed and jumped out the window to a nearby tree, before darting off to the main village. He jumped out of the trees after reaching the downtown area of the village, and he began to walk along the empty streets as a slow pace. Hem, I hope I can handle my team's first M S Sino away fro M T H E lead village. Naruto said out loud to himself. But I've only been leading the squad for a little while. Something on your mind, geki? A somewhat raspy female voice said from behind of him. Naruto recognized the chakra signature and turned his head to look over his shoulder to see Anko standing there. Yo, Anko, what's up, Naruto said, not turning his body around. I'm going drinking to forget about today's mission I had. Anko said walking youo beside him. Now your turn, what's up with you, I don't see your usual grin. Well I don't know if you know but I'm a joni and I have my own S W quad now. Tomorrow I'm taking them on my first C rank mission, Naruto said, looking up at the sky. I'm not sure if I'm ready as I thought I was. I see, tell you what, come with me gaki, Anko said, putting her arm around his shoulders. Let's go chat and then get good and shitfaced at the bar I usually frequent. Ah, I'm not old enough to drink, Naruto said, looking over at her. Sure you are, you became an adult in the eyes of all the minute you put on that headband of yours, Anko said, urging him forward, in the direction of the bar. Old enough to kill, old enough to drink, and behave like an adult. Now let's go, my young whiskered friend. True, but who said you were my friend? You psychopathic bitch, Naruto asked with a grin. If I recall, the first time we met you threw a konai at my face, and then ned the blood off of it. What can I say, mister flatterer? I am a psycho and I though it was fun to mess with you, Anko said, grinning back. Now move your before a konai makes it way up it. Fine, fine, I'll play along, you crazy snake bitch, Naruto said, walking with her. They made their way to a bar called the Maggot Pit, and walked inside. Anko had Naruto take a seat while she ordered a few bottles of sake and two achoco cups. She then walked over to him and sat down across from him grinning. Okay you've never had sake before, so I'm going to warn you, it can be a bit rough till you get used to it, Anko sead opening a bottle, and pouring some in each of the two dishes. Because it can be rough reason, I got a favorite of mine, a sweet apple flavored bottle called Ginjio Shu for you to get used to it, and a regular bottle as well, okay, ready? Let's drink and talk. Um, okay, Naruto said, picking up the cup, unsure of it. Well, cheers, I guess. Naruto sipped from the cup, coughing a bit after swallowing it while Anko laughed. Told you it can be rough, lightweight, Anko said, drinking the entire cup down. Just keep drinking it and you'll learn to like it. So, you were going to talk to me about your mission? Well it's to the land of waves and back, Naruto said, drinking down the rest of his cup, with a nasty look on his face after swallowing it. Still tastes like shit, mostly, better than the first sip, but anyways, I had my first C rank mission to the wave country we nie was twelve, shortly after becoming a gennen. My squad ended up facing Zabuza Momchi and his apprentice Haku. We nearly got killed fighting them, and I wonder if it's a good idea to go back there, I mean Zabuza is dead, but still, it can be dangerous. Well no shit, you faced one of the seven demon swordsmen and lived. Not bad kid, Anko said, downing another cup of sake. But I think you'll be fine given all you've faced over the years. You need to just relax and go with the flow, maybe it will be a boring, mission or maybe a life or death one, who knows?